Call the meeting to order and if Pastor Winn would-
Sure.
-give us the invocation.
We can. You want to stand?
Yeah.
Please stand.
Father, we're grateful that we're able to serve our community and we just pray this morning that you would continue to guide us, direct us, as we look at the matter before us, continue to give us the wisdom we need as we plan for the future. And we're grateful for it in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bobbin Serpy.
Here.
Barbara Cragg.
Here.
Russ Wynn.
Here.
Chairman Kurlander.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
James Orster.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. Now, there are two separate meetings, the meeting of June 19th and the meeting of June 25th. So we hear a motion to approve the minutes of June 19th.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please.
Bobbin Serpy.
Yes.
Barbara Cragg.
Yes.
Russ Wynn.
Yes.
Chairman Kurlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Orster.
Yes.
And now the minutes of June 25th, 2018.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as stated.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Bobbin Serpy.
Yes.
Barbara Cragg.
Yes.
Russ Wynn.
Yes.
Chairman Kurlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Orster.
Yes.
This is, we're at the point of the meeting where we ask for public comment and while I'll ask for it, I can't help but notice nobody is here. Which may say more than anything I could possibly say about our relevance. I'd like to start the meeting by thanking, I wish you were here to thank Audrey Vance for her years of dedication and service to the city of Benita Springs and to the help that she's given to our zoning board in particular and to wish her well as she goes forth with other challenges in her life. Audrey, thank you. Before we get to today's agenda item, I would like to ask if Mike Fegan will give us an overview of what the zoning board can expect in the next six months. Do you have any cases that we're ready to, that have come before us? Right now, we don't have, to my knowledge, anything scheduled. Maybe you could tell us.
Sure. Mike Fegan, for the record. Right now, staff does have several cases that are on the docket, none of which have been scheduled officially at this time. I myself, I have, one, two, three, I have three rezonings, three special exceptions, two variances, and a PD amendment that's going to be coming before you, probably within the next six months. So that's nine cases. So that's where I'm at. I know that Jackie also has several cases as well. They're all still in the sufficiency process. I do have a group of cases that I'm trying to get ready for zoning board next month, which would be October 16th, I believe, would be the meeting date. Not making any promises yet, but I'm trying to get there. So I have nine personally. I know Jackie has a handful as well, so fourteen, fifteen, probably within the next six months, you're going to see.
So some meetings presumably will have more than one case?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you, Mike, if you could do us a favor, I would ask you if you could prepare for us a list of all the cases, particularly planned developments, that have been approved in the last two years.
Okay.
And tell us, how many of those have begun construction and how many have, you know, and what stage they're at? Have they sought a development order?
Sure.
Are they just dormant or? If you could do that for us.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't mean you personally, I mean community development.
Absolutely. Can do.
That would be great.
Sure.
Just to give, kind of give us some feedback as to what happens here.
Mr. Chairman, could you request that he email that list?
Yeah, that would be great. Is that permissible?
I could send it to the clerk and they can email it to you.
Right.
Fine.
That would be great.
There's Jackie now.
Mike, I have a other question for you. I guess there's a workshop coming up on form zoning.
Form-based code, yes.
Could you tell us a little bit about that and what our role should be, perhaps?
Sure. Form-based code is, it's a type of zoning that's been gaining steam a lot lately. Essentially, the main focus is you enact controlling mechanisms for the form itself. So when I say form, I mean the building, the site design, those types of things. And you sort of put the uses, while they're important, they're no longer as important as the form. If you nail the form and if you're happy with the way things look, then the uses kind of come second. Whereas right now, we have a very Euclidean zoning code, which is very use-heavy. The primary focus of many of these zoning actions and ordinances tend to be very use-focused as opposed to form-focused. So form-based code is sort of a way to, not necessarily flip it all around, but it's a way to prioritize the form a little bit more. The firm that was hired to do the visioning, so to speak, for what form-based code could look like in Benita Springs is a firm out of Miami called DPZ. And they've done this in numerous other municipalities and jurisdictions throughout the state of Florida. For an example, on this coast, they were instrumental in the regs for downtown Naples, Fifth Avenue, and for downtown Fort Myers. Now, it's important to note that, no, we're not trying to be like those jurisdictions. We're standing on our own, we're our own thing. But Fort Myers and Naples aren't the same either. But they are able to craft ordinances and codes that sort of helped to design a form that's appropriate for that particular setting. So they've been hired to sort of tackle several aspects of that within the city. And this is a workshop that, for the most part, is more educational. It's more to inform the citizenry, the public, zoning board members, whoever chooses to come, a little bit more about how form-based code plays a role in your city, the pros of it, what it can do that's good for you. Because there's additional premiums on interconnectivity and traveling and transportation, landscaping. You really sort of incentivize a beautiful design. And that's what this workshop's going to be geared towards, sort of educating and receiving feedback as to what the thoughts are for something like that here.
When is the workshop?
I believe it's next Tuesday, the 25th.
No.
I'm sorry. I lied. It's in October?
Actually, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Tuesday, the 25th, I think it starts at 5:30 in City Hall.
25th of this month?
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is that the 25th? You know what's going to happen today at this meeting?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Which involves a bunch of suggested-
Sure.
...amendments to our previous procedures.
Yes.
How would the form-based operation fit into that? It appeared to me like it would meld with it.
I agree. And staff is in agreeance that that would be the case as well. When we get into the bulk of this discussion, I think you'll see that several of the items that you will be receiving as part of your public hearing process, should this go through, tend to be very site-related in terms of functionality of the site and the way the site looks, the way the building looks. And all that melts perfectly into the concept of having a good form for the site.
Thank you.
Was that timed 5:30 or 5?
5:30.
Any other questions of Mike? So before we ask staff to present what's been happening here, let me give a little background. So on April 30th, we had a workshop. During that workshop, both city council and the zoning board, together with outside land use council, David Theriak, had an opportunity to present the myriad of ideas as to how we could operate going forward. As part of that process, the mayor asked that we, that the zoning board form a committee to work on prospective changes. We've reported back to you on some preliminary things and today's meeting is to report back to you on a more substantive thing. In reviewing what happened at the workshop, what was clear, where there was virtual unanimity, was that the current Article IV of the Land Development Code, which is the chapter that we operate by, is largely dysfunctional. David Theriak, I think, used the word grotesque in describing it. So thinking about that, I've often wondered, as we decide cases, what precisely is it we're voting on? And there've been a number of cases where I really had no idea what we're voting on. It was so vague. People often refer to it as bubble zoning. There've been cases even before I got here, major cases, where the developer came in, drew a diagram on a piece of paper, and said, "Here's my presentation." Major, major things. Theriak, later on in that workshop, also said that there was a way, you didn't have to reinvent the wheel here, that if you took Article III, which is largely functional and has all the requirements that community development operates by, and melded it into Article IV, you can solve a lot of the problems. So what this meeting is about is to bring you up to date on where we are in that process. The committee's goals were as follows. First, to create transparency in the process. Right now, Article IV is anything but transparent. What we vote on, what city council votes on, it's all very preliminary stuff and everything that the community would want to know is in the back end done administratively without the ability for the public to participate. So goal one was to create transparency. Goal two, equally important, was to create a system where there's a rational basis for our decision. I've heard more than once, many of you say that we have a quasi-judicial process and that process requires us to make reasoned decisions. That in turn requires that we be given sufficient facts on which to make a reasoned decision. I would argue, and I think the committee would argue, we currently don't have those facts. And third, if we could create a process that is understandable, simpler, may in fact be a faster process, and may promote development as opposed to promoting developers, so that the citizens of the community have a full understanding of what we're doing, I think we would be doing a service. So those were the three goals. And with that said, I would ask John Dolmer, are you going to be presenting or is Mike? What the committee has done in working with the four of you?
I would be happy to help guide a discussion. In terms of a presentation, I'd look at this more of a give and take-
Right.
...as opposed to a true presentation.
That's good.
But the packet that you have before you has some correspondence and some, where is that? I think you also have-
Yeah, we have.
The, there it is. The draft language. And this just cuts right to the heart of this. I know that what we had talked about, I've had conversations going back over a year that would discuss the possibility of bringing a lot of the engineering-type review into some form of the zoning process. And the reason why that was intended was because that is where you get into a lot of the specifics. If you read your current requirements for a planned development submittal, a lot of the statements simply state that your water management system needs to be described through a narrative. Certain things either can be described generically or just through a statement. When we get into the development order phase, the application, that is the engineering document, which contains all of the specifics. Now, there needs to be a line drawn because unless we want to have the zoning board made up entirely of engineers, we really don't want to get into what would truly be an engineering review. But the details that are provided in that are something I think there has been interest in making part of the zoning process. So in that effort, everyone here has done a very good job of combing through creative ordinances and coming up with creative ideas. And we've put together what is a pretty good start to what could be considered a two-step zoning process. And that two-step involves, obviously, two steps. The first of which is what you would kind of see in applications for some of the developments that have come before you. Horizon Park would be an excellent example. It showed a general lot layout, very general infrastructure, landscaping, but there really wasn't much in the way of specific design, there wasn't much in the way of specific uses. Even though each parcel had a schedule of uses, that specific use, that specific building layout was not included on that plan. So that's where the step two would come in. And step two would include those details along with some of the general, or I'm sorry, not general, more specific information that you would see in the development order. So you would see specific sizes of lakes, a little bit more in terms of specific layouts for parking, uses, building locations, architecture of that building, the specifics of which, obviously, you would make recommendations for before they went into effect, but that's what you see in the document before you. And so the intent is that we give people the ability, if they just purchase property, they're not exactly sure what they're going to be doing with these planned developments, the opportunity to come in quickly and have a conceptual approval. And then, when they start to either sell, lease, congeal their thoughts, they can come back in for final approval. And that would be a much more specific approval and depending on where that line is drawn between zoning and engineering, would depend on what needed to be done as part of the development order before they could start construction. So those are my general thoughts in this. Mr. Kurlander?
So one of the things that we talked about during the workshop afterward was an architectural review board. At the workshop, there wasn't much of an appetite for that. There was, one city councilman had talked about a hybrid form and one of our zoning board members was interested in that. So while we do not recommend the creation of a separate bureaucracy for an ARB, Architectural Review Board, what we are doing is folding what would normally go before an Architectural Review Board into the second stage of the review process. So hopefully, what this would do is, by long measure, speed up the process. We have the ability, this is only a framework we're discussing here today, to see if we go to council and see, do they buy into this idea? And with the meat on the bones will come a little later. But this two-step process would accomplish what many of you have voiced concerns about in the last two years about, what's this going to look like? Where's it going to be on the site? How precisely is the traffic going to work? Mr. Orster.
Yeah, can I expand a little bit on that?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, we're not, we're magnifying the process, however, we're simplifying it also. And we're giving the developer the chance to come in, if he wants, if he's got everything decided, he owns a piece of ground, and he wants to do X, he can come in and skip Phase One and go directly to Phase Two, which means he goes into, I'm going to say final plans, but final plans as far as the zoning requirements, which will be a heavier investment for his expertise to make a presentation. However, if a guy might be a little speculative on a piece of property that, man, I'd like to own that and get some changes to the zoning and be able to flip it, I can go in to the, just the preliminary stage, see what's going to pass possibly, the city's requirements for a rezone or, not variance, but a reconfiguration of what the requirements are, and then find out what his problems might be or what his benefits might be by having this available as he's trying to make the property more enhancing to him, typically financially. So it gives people that are in the business an opportunity to go either way and to get what we want in order to make rational decisions at the time when he brings the project, either a preliminary idea or final. Adding that if, the preliminary approval will require a subsequent final approval. So it will be a two-step process. But that's okay. After Step One, the developer can massage his plan to fit into what may be coming along finally. I don't know if that makes it any clearer-
Yeah. I just add one thing to that, and Barbara, you may want to add something. Nothing new is being recommended. So all we're saying is to take Article III, which is now at the back end of the process, essentially move it into Article IV. The drafting of this, we're nowhere near that stage yet. And so there's nothing new here. It's just when it occurs. But truthfully, it will require an expenditure a little bit earlier on the part of the developer.
And I think there you want to underscore perhaps the transparency goal that we had too. And this is the point that Larry, you've made many times, and much better than I'm going to, but that right now, a lot of what we're talking about putting in Stage Two happens, of course, but it happens out of the public view by staff review. And what we were trying to do is bring back not only the zoning board, but the council, the elected representatives of the people, to have a second look at this after the preliminary idea. Yes, that sounds sort of good. But to be part of the process of determining now exactly what is it that you're going to do. And to be able to have more, the public understand that too, and be more able to put their input in, and if they have objections, be able to know that this is the time to voice them and where to voice them. So it's not changing the end game, it's just changing how we're playing the game. And I think that's a very important thing to point out. We're not adding huge numbers of new requirements. We're just putting the voice of the people back into the process of making these decisions.
To give you an idea of some of the additional submittal information, and like Board Member Craig said, this is information that the city already gets, it's just that a portion of it is done after the public hearing review. If you go to the very last page of your handout, there's a little table that shows what it is that you get right now as part of the current submittal information and what's being proposed as part of this new two-step process. And you can see all the additional items there that you would now get to see as part of your review. And again, these are items that the city requires anyway, we just require them more at the development order stage in Chapter Three, bringing some of those items and kind of front-loading the process so that you get to see it. The other aspect of the two-step process is, which is always a positive for the board and for council, is that you essentially get two cracks at the project. You know, there have been times in the past where the boards have made decisions, and that's fine. And then after the fact, there's been additional follow-up questions or concerns that have come after the votes already taken place. Well, this also plays a role into that as well because now you get a second chance to see the project with these additional detailed items. So the purpose of it is to provide a much clearer picture in which to base your decision on. And this is good for the board and of course for staff, so. But that little table just kind of gives you a quick little synopsis.
Question, please.
Sure.
If I'm understanding all that you're saying, there's going to be two opportunities for us, the zoning board, to review the process.
Correct.
And I'm thinking from a standpoint of the developer, the extra time and effort. Okay. Then there's going to be a third review by city council. Or will there be a review by city council after our first look and then again after the second look?
Yes.
In which case there will be four reviews, or four points, or four times where the developer will be in front of the zoning board twice and city council twice.
That's probably down from 40 reviews that they currently do because they're constantly going back and meeting with community development behind closed doors. It's just that it's a formal process.
But that still will go on. They're still going to have to get to the first, to get to the first hearing, they're going to have to meet umpteen times with the community development.
Correct. Right. Now, I think it was Jay who pointed out to us that in cities that have adopted this two-step proposal, in many of the cases, that final approval by the city council goes on their consent agenda. It's still a public hearing, so a member of the public can object, but it's really not, there has to be by law preliminary approval by the city at some stage, right? So there's essentially, I think, longer term, as they get used to it, it could be put on a consent. Yes, sir?
I'd like to suggest to make it very clear that the developer can do the one-step process.
Right.
He goes directly to Stage Two, bypasses Stage One. So if a developer has a project that he knows what he wants to do, he's got the site, he's got his-
He's got all those.
All that stuff in, all the things in hand, then he can skip the preliminary so he'll just have two presentations, one to us and one to- And I'd like to point out on this last sheet, really, if you look at the last sheet, the really important item is that they present architectural elevations, renderings, and cross-sections, which gives us, which we've rarely gotten, we've gotten some, from nothing to some sketches, is all we've ever had to vote on. We're talking now about stuff that has meat into it, that we can really understand, we know what's going to happen on the site. That's a big item, that's a change. That's a big item, that's a change on, on the, this proposed project, suggested changes.
And if I could just add to that, we are responsible under the law for making findings based on a reasonable record, that the goals that are set out in the zoning law have been met. And if we don't have the information to make reasonable findings, we aren't doing our job. And what this is trying to do is provide the kind of information to us so that we can do what would be something at least remotely resembling a quasi-judicial review. Right now, in many of the cases, we don't have the information, and the best we're doing is saying, well, we hope it's going to turn out all right. And when we're done and the council's done, there's no chance to go back and look. And so this, I think, is an effort to have a compromise between what developers may want, which is a sort of overview approval of the idea on the property that they can develop, and then a chance for us and the city council, because, don't forget, we just give recommendations. City council is the only body that can make a decision. And to have a second way, to have public and our input into what's going to come out of this development process. And I don't think that's a small change. I think having the information to make reasoned decisions, and having the public be able to get into the process again when the decisions are actually going to affect them, when the information is there that they'll know it's going to affect them, is a very important change.
John?
And to kind of address the question with the two-step versus skipping to the final step. Just to guess, but what I would expect to see if this is adopted and goes forward is that smaller projects, if you see a CVS or a Walgreens, a single building, commercial site, will probably come through and go straight to the second process. They know what they want, it's very easy to design the site. Multi-parcel, commercial or mixed-use industrial projects probably go through two separate steps. And that has to do with, with how they're developed and how they're marketed. It's not as easy to sell out ten commercial or industrial parcels before you go through your zoning, so how is, how are you to know exactly what those buildings are going to look like? So those cases or those type of projects, I would expect to use both steps, mainly because it's very difficult for them to have everything in place and all the details they need to go straight to that second step immediately. But smaller projects or entirely residential projects, it's very likely that those will go through in just, in just one phase, because they, it is a single developer, they control the, most of the time they control the entire property. And they're going to lay it out as they see fit, and they'll have it ready to go when, when they bring it to hearing. Things may turn out differently, but just based on what I've seen, that's how I would imagine it would flow.
And Larry, let me expand a little bit on that. The way I understand this, what was changed, John, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, let's talk about a big project, multi-uses. He can go through the preliminary process, get preliminary approval, now he's got it, an outlot that's ready to go. He can bring that in separately for Phase, the Phase Two project, and get final approval. He's got the pre-application approval for that, so he may end up with, say, three final plans based upon as a development progresses and he gets, finds buyers. So, so this really speeds up the process, in my opinion.
Well, and I'll take a project that's generally built out, is the Burnwood project on Old Forty-One. The way that that project was originally entitled was to sell off parcels and let each property come in and develop on their own, then switch strategies, but originally it was very similar to how Horizon Park was set up. And in that particular case, they probably would have gone through Phase One, established all of those parcels, those properties, a general list of uses for each of them. And then as each of them sold and they came in for approval, they would come in for that final stage, either in single projects or several of those parcels come in simultaneously. That would give them the opportunity to get the project started, get the central infrastructure installed, and then as parcels were sold off, those would come in for your, your ultimate review and approval, and councils as well, and then they would start construction.
Can I ask a question? Is that okay? That when, since the city council is considering apparently form-based zoning, my understanding is they're just considering that for the downtown overlay, they're not concerned.
Correct.
Putting that on all of this. But assuming we were to go forward with something like these changes, and five years from now or six years from now after we finally get form-based zoning there and they decide this is a good idea, how hard would it be or what would you do to then modify what we're doing now and make it form-based?
Well, and just to, and to take a step back, I know we've had discussions on how different consultants in different areas of the city are being planned. DPC has been hired by the city to final the land use section of the Benita Beach Road overlay and vision. They've also been hired to create a form-based code for downtown. We are looking at a planned development process that would apply basically everywhere other than downtown. Even in what DPC is currently looking at for Benita Beach Road, there is nothing in there that would change how the approval process would take place. So you have several things going on simultaneously, but that does not mean that what you're doing only applies to a small portion of the city. In fact, this applies to probably ninety percent of the city, and only about ten percent of the form-based code would apply, because that's strictly for downtown. So as both of these progress, there may be more popularity or more support for one version or the other, but that's when you start trying to read the tea leaves and see how things go into the future. This topic and this discussion is very important regardless of what happens downtown, or regardless of what happens with Benita Beach Road and its overlay, because this applies everywhere else. And this is where you're going to see most of the cases that come before you. Of those cases that Mike read off, that he has, that he's looking to bring before you, none of those are downtown. So this would apply to every single one of them, had it been in effect.
Again, I'm confused. The thing I'm looking at here, in your write-up, it says, "Plan Development," P.D.
Yes, sir.
Plan developments are pretty well described under Chapter 400. But you just mentioned that this procedure would also apply to the little independent CVS store that comes in the door, is that what you're saying?
If they were to, if they were to come through as a planned development, they would apply, but it only applies to that type of rezoning. If they are within a conventional zoning district where that use is permitted, and they want to develop within the development standards of that zoning district, you would not see them come through as this process, they would simply go through with their engineering and then their building permit. However, with a lot of those projects, because they tend to buy smaller parcels, they, they have requests for setback deviations or access deviations, or there usually tends to be one reason or another with a site constraint that guides them into this process, but that does not require them to go to this process.
Right. I guess my comment is that it's not clear here, and that maybe it's lacking a definition.
Well, you would only, this proposal would only apply to those applications that applied for a planned development rezoning. And, and if you are not applying for a rezoning to a planned development, these proposals would not apply to you.
Right. I mean, we even.
We should say that.
And it will.
Yeah.
It will. What we, what we tried to do in the document before you was to provide you enough information about how the process could work, by things that have worked other places and things that we think would work, that we could have a discussion on the structure. This is by no means the proposed final document that we're ready to codify and put into the land development code. So your concerns are, I share them. We're just not at that point yet.
Right. My, my experience on, on the zoning board here, when, you know, we've seen zoning changes where the developer has sought to take his project and make it a planned development.
Yes, sir.
But he's, he has never really honored the definition of a planned development as set forth in Chapter 400. It's, it's always been an exercise of, let's get some more density by making that change. And I, because the, the definition of a planned development, you know, talks about several uses in combination, and I would hope that as part of this thing, we can, we can get more focused on what a planned development really is as we've already defined it.
That would make your staff very happy.
Yeah.
I think that's a point very well taken. We really need to, to fix that.
In all honesty, what, what had happened was when Lee County originally adopted a planned unit development ordinance, and it was the new craze in planning, and it was supposed to be the thing that saved us all, and it brought planning forward quite a bit, but there were some deficiencies. So Lee County created the Planned Development Zoning District, which ironically was based on a lot of the information that they had learned and taken through with, you know, Benita Bay and some of the other developments back in the, in the early eighties, and put that into its ordinance, and has been massaged and modified since that time. But there really hasn't been a real rewrite since that Planned Development Ordinance was, was approved. So the intent with current planning and goals, objectives, processes, the definitions, the things that we're looking for, you're right, if they're in there, they have been part of a, of a smaller modification that's taken place since the original ordinance was approved, and has not been part of an entire rewrite or an entire rethink of the zoning process or planned development process since probably sometime in the, the late nineteen eighties.
In that regard, at the, at the workshop, Councilman Forbes brought up the, his concern, somewhat along your lines, that in addition to having this kind of squirrely definition, there was a problem that the zoning board approves a lot of projects, and they lay dormant. Nothing, nothing happens. I mean, if you go on Realtor.com or Zillow, you could see them all there. And another thing that we have to change, I, I think we really have to address this concern there, that, hey, we're approving things and nothing happens. You mentioned one on the corner of Terry Street, and that we approved two years ago.
Oh, the apartments now at Dean, at Dean.
Yeah.
In Old Forty-One. Well, it's just now coming to fruition. They're, they're clearing the site and it's under construction. I assume the LDOs for the whole project is in place?
There's a pre-construction meeting today.
Super, have at it. Mr. Chairman, let me point out one other thing. On the table in Benita Springs is the railroad track. And changing that to, or getting the ability to make that a multi-use facility through, from county line north to our north city limits. But when, when that happens, developers galore are going to come in and want to buy land adjacent to that track. We've seen it all over the country, where trails like that have, have just absorbed developers, because everybody wants to be along that trail. What we're talking about today would fit right into that philosophy, where a guy could buy a chunk of ground, and as you drive, because everything's going to change, this, the back of what you see today will be the front door to that trail, which has to be form-based fitting that operation. So this, what we're proposing won't complicate anything in the future, is my point.
When I, when I look at the, the write-up here, under the first phase, preliminary development plan, it's sort of, you know, it's a very nice paragraph here outlining everything that's going to happen. And then the same language pretty much is used when you move over to the final development plan. It's almost a boilerplate kind of recitation of the same stuff. The only difference are, really are two verbs. And under the preliminary presentation, we talk about the approximate location, square footage, dimensions, et cetera, et cetera. When you move over to the final, we talk about the exact location, square footage, dimensions, and stuff of lots. So we're moving from a, an approximate set of documents to an exact set of documents. And I, I guess I, I think about the whole procedure, like if you're, if you're doing, if you're designing, you've already pointed out that we've got preliminary, we've got final, and we've got development order. To me, the development order gets into the exact realm rather. I don't know how you make that distinction. When you're, for instance, when you're designing a building, for instance, you, you have three phases typically. You have the conceptual design, then you move into a phase that's called design development, which is the second phase, and then your final phase, which is the construction documents. So you have those three steps, and we're talking about three steps here. And I think it's important to really define just, we talked about additional costs to the applicant. Those are, I believe, probably mostly going to be architectural costs, design fees and that type of thing.
Architectural and engineering entirely, yes, sir.
Right. So the first phase of this thing really is more of a conceptual idea, and maybe that's a word that could be inserted here somewhere as part of the preliminary. And then that conceptual design gets criticized and commented on, and then it becomes part of the final. But again, the word "exact" might not be the, the right word to, to use there.
And I think for a little clarity, if you were to look at the, the submittal checklist for both, for both, what we're currently calling the preliminary and the final, that gives you a little bit more of a breakdown, because you're right, the narrative doesn't really, the verbiage is very similar. But when you get into the checklist is where you start to see the distinctions between the two, the two phases. And just so this board knows, there is no magic process that takes you to the promised land. The form-based code is a good process, but it's not perfect. Your current zoning has good and bad into it. This as well will have good and bad. What makes it work is how those involved in the process work through the process. And so take a look at this, and, and I, and I know that there's been a lot of support for the two-step process, but let us know what you think. Are we missing something? Did, should it be called something else? Should it be conceptual as opposed to a preliminary? Should some of the information in one phase be moved to another? Do you even want a two-step process? I mean, they, these are, whatever feedback you want to provide is helpful, because once the council makes a change, if they choose to do so, there probably isn't going to be another change immediately, because they're going to want to see how the system works. So if you've got comments, if you have suggestions, we would love to hear them, and now is the time to, to start hearing those.
Gee, I was under the impression that was the purpose of this meeting. I guess I was wrong, John.
No, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, but yes, sir.
I thought we would, if we could reach consensus, we would take a vote today, and then the next step would be to take this framework and go to city council and see, you're the deciders, what do you think? Are we on the right track? And then come back, we would come back again when there's final language, where, where the ability to do harm exponentially increases when you start drafting the language.
I'd just like to ask a sort of legal question about how you think this will play out. If we're going to have this two-step process, I think one of the reasons was that we want the public voice and the accountable voice back in the process when more clear information is available to be able to know what's going to happen. And we're trying to design a process that is respectful of developers who wish to be able to get some kind of sense of whether what they want to do is, is okay, and then they know they come back, have to come back and have public approval. But what worries me is if there becomes a presumption that if you give a preliminary approval, you have to go through with Step Two, that they sort of have that thing they call the "right" to go forward. And I want to know how you think that works. What if we approve a preliminary proposal? And then when they come in with the final design, we say, wow, this is awful, it's not anything we had in mind. What happens if we say, this isn't approved? I mean, where are we legally in terms of, did they have a right to assume that they were going to get this?
Since I am not a member of a bar in any state, I'm happy to provide you my legal expertise, which is basically that.
Your guess will do.
which is basically that you will need to be very clear as to what you are approving and what that approval means. And the language that's presented to you is good, but I don't think it's final. Because you're exactly right. You could see a preliminary plan that looks good at that stage of the game. Later on, when you see how the developer had the final concept in mind, maybe that doesn't work along your thinking, but it would almost, based upon a conceptual thought in my own mind and nothing that I've been given direction for, you would be treating this almost like the way we treat development orders, where everything is a denial when you request additional information, but you're specific as to what you want to see to get to approval. And I would think that you would want to work down that path, at least some similar path to that.
Well, just for example, one of the things that concerns me is we're supposed to make these findings, and one of those is how this development will affect water quality and water flow and all the other problems of water. Typically, we don't have any information to make that kind of a finding. We were just guessing. So could you put into the preliminary approval that this approval is contingent on a water plan that addresses the following concerns?
You can, but I think that you might be better served by creating specific standards that you want to see with every project as opposed to having to limit or clarify what the approval states for there. If you create a clear standard as to what the water quality or what the stormwater design must include or must design to, I think you're in much better shape.
In that regard, I noticed that you've checked that we get water management in both processes. And to Barbara Craig's point, it's bothered me. I mean, it seems to me that water is, if we had to pick a single issue where we have the biggest problem, I would say it's water management. And at the workshop, there was a lot of discussion about water management and the need to. In that regard, the city council has been talking about doing things with water management. What has happened since Irma legislatively or policy-wise?
Well, right now, stormwater was, we were told, one of our, the highest priority. Not one of the highest, but the highest priority in terms of how we handle it. And we are going back and even looking, pulling old permits for developments within the city so we can make sure that, one, they were constructed according to those permits, and two, that they're being maintained. Because that was a lot of the problem. The city's also looking at how it moves water and its own sites. So right now, we are in the fact gathering phase, but we're thankful for the fact that Irma actually brought about the fact gathering stage. Because while projects have always been approved, and I don't think there really has been much work done inconsistent with the required permits at the time, Benita Springs has been developed for a long time and those standards have evolved. And I think that once a project has been approved, unless they come back in for a modification, there really has been no need or direction given to go back out to those sites to make sure everything is okay. And in some of those cases, I think that you'll see the associations want someone to go out there to make sure that their system functions, and others maybe not. I don't know. But I think that the goal right now is to make sure that we are, we have the information and we know what should be on each site and how it should have been developed. And to go on to that one step further is I know that we're also going to be looking at what our stormwater standards are going forward because currently we have an increased standard over the minimum South Florida Water Management District standard. The district standard is maintaining one inch over the entire site, and you discharge at a rate that's consistent with the pre-development rate. City Benita Springs requires, in addition to that one inch, an additional 50% of that be maintained for water quality, not quantity and volume, but quality is in terms of clarity. And it does not affect the discharge rate, but it does change the designs of site, water management on each site. So we'll be looking at that to see if that's adequate, whether the discharge rates need to be reduced. I know that's been a focus of Councilmember Forbes. Collier County has gone through and reduced those rates, but they've also gone through and done the modeling so that they had the numbers to specifically reduce each basin to. So there's a lot of things that are on the table, and I think we're, as more information comes in, the direction we're given is going to get a lot more specific.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Looking at the submittal checklist.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of thoughts that might apply to both.
Which one? Okay.
Yeah, that, I didn't see any specific mention of parking. Maybe that gets wrapped into one of these larger categories. Another item that might be missing on, since, you know, these are going to be large projects, is entrance features, signage, and that type of thing. You know, that will have a very, the way the project is presented to the community at its entrance is, you know, very important.
We have stayed away specifically from signage at this point, but it's obviously going to be a major component.
It's probably something you'd like to see.
Yes, and we do. We see it later on. We also, we also support and recommend applicants bring it forward as unified signage plan if they can, especially part of the planned development, because it just makes everyone's life easy. If the council has already seen it and blessed it, by the time it gets to us with the building permits, it's almost a formality.
Why have you stayed away? I think he's got a good idea there.
The sign ordinance itself is something that we are considering in its entirety.
Got it. Okay.
Not because we don't agree 100%.
Are you talking about a modification of the existing sign ordinance or a new? I'm just curious because we went through that exercise two years ago.
Yes, we did. And I was hoping that that exercise was going to carry us for a number of years because modifying a sign ordinance is never an exciting event. Well, actually, it's always an exciting event. It's never usually a fun event. But recent direction from our Supreme Court has told us that maybe we should look at it again.
Another item that I remember one developer who we worked with here had no idea where the garbage cans were going to go. And I think maybe something added in here about services and facilities to cover that issue. Where's the dumpster and?
But I think we look at that maybe on the final.
So maybe that goes over in the other, the final submittal checklist.
That almost becomes a utility though.
Well, it's more than a utility.
But it's back-of-house operations is how it function.
Yeah, it's a service.
Yep.
Right.
Agreed.
Can I make just sort of one final statement on where I am on this? When we went to this workshop, it was very clear, and certainly our attorney made it very clear, that what we have now is quite a mess. And that really, it grew by a change here, a change there, and doesn't have any overall rational structure to it. So I'm not 100% certain if this is the best solution, but I think we have to move somehow to do something. And I'm sure this can be tweaked. I'm sure the council will want to put more tweaks upon it. But I think it behooves us to take this forward and to get some forward motion on revising these terribly, well, what was that word he used?
He used, I think he used the word grotesque.
Grotesque, okay, I like that word.
In describing Article Four of the Land Development Code.
It's a strong word.
I would urge us to, to make changes if we wish, but to send something forward to the council. That's what they asked us to do at this workshop, and if the council wants feedback on that. But I think we should make it clear in sending this forward that we are responding to what they asked for. And if they have changes that they wish to make with it, after all, they're the elected representatives. They should go ahead and make them. But I think we need to send something for them to act upon. To do nothing is to just go on with the grotesque list or whatever.
Barbara, I agree. So if I understand what you're saying, saying we should take this document that we have prepared and say, this is our conceptual idea of the direction, this is the direction we are proceeding. And do you agree with the direction we're going? Or do you want to add something, like some of us have added parking and waste management and those types of things? And get further direction before the group, your group, I guess, or all of us, however you decide to do it, Larry, or Mr. Chairman.
No, I think we should.
Get together as a group again and discuss it, or take it back to.
No, I think, I think that this framework or conceptual plan, as you've called it, is what we're going to present to city council. If they give us the green light or with modifications, we go back, the committee does some more work, comes back to the zoning board. Nothing here gets approved without the full zoning.
Right. So may I make a motion?
Please.
Okay.
Is there any further, well, we can have discussion into the motion.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion that we have this, I'm going to call it a conceptual idea, plan of the changes we wish to make, the direction we're going. And I'll make a motion that we continue on this path and present it to city council and for their blessings.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. Yeah, second.
Discussion?
I'd like to suggest that before it goes to the council, that we allow staff the freedom to incorporate what the council gets, the suggestions that have been made here. And so it's not a carbon copy of this. We add in the part.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so it'll be an updated version based upon our discussion today is what will go to the council.
I would amend that, yes. Good suggestion.
Okay.
I would also like to encourage that there be a statement such that Larry put at the beginning to the email that was sent out to us with the documents that makes very clear what we had in mind as the goals when we looked forward on this. And to get that to the council upfront, because I think to just read this document without understanding what sort of focused our minds as we went forward to create this new process loses the importance of this. So those goals that you sent out maybe just fleshed out a little bit more as to what we think the importance of allowing the public and the elected representatives of the public to have a larger say in the final sort of design and proposals that are going to be part of our town, that that was very high in our concerns as we developed this. And that really, this isn't adding anything that they don't have to do somewhere. It's just an awful lot of it was done at the staff level, not at the public accountability, I would say, the accountability level.
And I would like to also, as part of the discussion, ask that council act in an expedient manner once they get this in front of them. Micah said that we have, he's gotten almost nine, I think you said nine projects coming forward, and Jackie's got a handful or so. So there's a lot coming down the pike, and I suspect that there will be even more. So we want to get this going and in place. It would be my desire to get it in place as soon as we can possibly do so. This gives these new developers direction, better direction.
I've got one more item to add. If this gets approved, I would like to suggest that in order to show the importance of this, that the zoning board feels, that people from the zoning board go to the members of this board, be allowed to go to the council meeting in support of this, which is probably unprecedented. But anyway, that should be forthcoming as far as the importance of it.
In that regard, if I may, I envision this much like today's meeting where maybe I would make an introductory statement to the city council as to what our goals were here, how we followed up, how we addressed people's concerns and so on, and then have staff talk about the conceptual plan itself, if that's all right. And I think it would be a very good idea that zoning board members come to the meeting and show support for this. So what we would do is send out an email when we know it's going to be on the agenda to let everybody know. It's a very good suggestion. So there's a motion on the floor. Just been a second. More discussion. Okay.
I just wanted to ask one question. Is this the sort of proposal that goes to the council and they act on it that day? Or is this one that has to be read and then acted on the next?
Oh, this one, they would give direction and we would turn it around immediately.
Right.
When ordinances are passed, there's two readings. So when this is the final version, we'll have a first reading, a second reading, and then we'll have an effective date. And just in addition to what everyone had said, even if you just go to the council meeting to listen to the direction that's given, this is going to be a topic that everybody needs to be working together and hearing what they have to say and what their direction is, is not a bad thing. So I would encourage everyone to be there, even if you have no intention of speaking.
Right. There's a motion on the floor. There's been a second.
If this gets passed today, which probably will, but what is the procedure? Is, who presents it? Is it your staff that presents it?
We will. I think Mr. Colonel has shown interest in making introductory remarks when this goes to council, and then we would make the, or lead the discussion with council or do the presentation however they would like it. And whatever direction is taken from that will then be brought back to you.
I feel that's good because I feel that the chairman should give a brief introduction and then let staff pick on it and ask the right way to go.
And similar to how we're going to take the changes you've requested today and tweak them before it goes to council, whatever they suggest, we tweak again and it comes back to you.
Right.
So everybody stays up to date.
So there's a motion on the floor. There's been a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Bob and Serby?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
Yes.
Russ Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kalender?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
James Ross there?
Yes.
Okay, so going back to the agenda item. What is our next meeting? October 16th? Do you have a case that we're going to?
I am trying to bring back Popeyes. Trying to get it together to bring back Popeyes. They submitted an additional application which has been found sufficient. I'm currying the process of writing the staff report for that. I'm trying to, so if we do have a hearing on the 16th, it'll be a rezoning, a special exception, and a variance all for that particular project.
So that's interesting because I think there may be a lesson learned, although it's a small one. The zoning board's wish was to not give them an indefinite adjournment. And that seemed to force a decision, which I think is a good thing. And they decided to go forward, whereas I probably, if we had granted them what they wanted, this indefinite thing, we'd be sitting there with nothing. Very good.
Did you also not mention, excuse me, that the mine was, might be on that agenda?
I don't think it'll be for, no, not for next month.
Jackie says no.
Okay. Is there anything further to come before the zoning board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Bob and Serby?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
Are you saying my name?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Russ Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kalender?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
No.
I wanted to see what was going to happen.
Four of us. Yes.
James Ross there?
Yes.
That would be something.
With that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Charlie, thank you so much for your help.
Here she is.